Turn your likes on, please. And pull your speakers in close to you. Okay. The Habit of Grace Planning Commission meeting for May 15th, 2025 will now come to order. I call the roll for purposes of video with each of the commissioners. Just show your hand as you say here. Ed Guerono.
Here.
Warren Hartenstein is absent. Farhat Shah.
I'm here.
Chip Place.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Harry Miller.
Here.
And Chairman Volney Ford is here. I would like to introduce city officials that are present. And if you would also please show your hand as I introduce you for the purpose of video. City Attorney April Eshak. Director of Planning Jeffrey Goins. And Associate City Planner Eric Lawrence. And we are hopeful that the our city council liaison will be able to make it. I'll introduce her if she walks in. We are introducing some new meeting procedures tonight to improve the public process. So please bear with us if we appear to stumble a little bit here and there as we as we adjust our processes. I also want to introduce Warren Hartenstein as another one of our commissioners who is Under old business, the only item on old business is the same one that's been continued as old business for some time, and that's our rules and procedures. And we continue to table this until there's some definitive action or not from city council Hello. Regarding the another change in our planning commission ordinance. I would like to also introduce Councilwoman Tammy Snegas, who is our council liaison. Tammy, you're we got you down there if you don't mind, right? That little seat.
Shh.
Well, the problem is, is we legally can't let you be on the dais. That's the problem.
Is it true?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's one of the changes that had to be made in the recent ordinance that our council liaison is no longer a serving commission member and and can only attend the meeting and and comment when called upon because, in other words, the council liaison can't participate in the process of a hearing. Right? So under rules and procedures, as I said, we've we had to table that. And what we're what we are hopeful is that the mayor and council will revisit our planning commission ordinance and eliminate our eighth position on the planning commission, which was that of an alternate member. We feel very confident based on the past years of of operation that we're plentiful with seven regular members because we only need four to make a quorum. And tonight we have a full quorum, a full membership, so we got a quorum, of course. And the second thing that that we picked up on is that in modifying the ordinance this past time, which is a month or so ago, that the all mention of a council liaison somehow got dropped out of the ordinance. So it doesn't describe any role for council liaison or does it even mention that there is a council liaison to this commission? And I did a little study of all the other commissions in the city and every single other commission in their enabling ordinance describes council liaison and what their role is. And so that's hopefully, I'm hoping hoping that we can get something in front of them, in front of the mayor and council to fix those two things if you are so inclined.
Can I speak?
Please.
Thank you. Yes, through the transition, there still needs to be some cleanup in the ordinance. Now with Jeff back or Jeff on as our director.
Right.
And we have Harry sworn in. And the rules and regulations need to be finalized as well as the ordinance so that we can have a liaison that, you know, can participate and make that decision about whether the alternate position will stay.
Okay.
So that's where we're at right now. So just give us a little bit of time with.
No problem.
Through the transition.
We're doing fine as we are. We just we we as long as the mayor doesn't fill that alternate position in the meantime, you know, we're in good shape. And thank you so much for doing that. So I hear a motion that we keep the rules and procedures on the table until the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Under new business, the first item on the agenda is building permit number 2024-198. And it is to extend a site plan approval that we approved a year ago for another year. And that's perfectly permissible according to our ordinances as long as we vote the extension. And then that extends it for another year. And I assume you all have had a chance to read to read the staff report on that and Mr. Director, do you have any comments to make about that or anything to add to that?
Good evening, Chairman. No, we have no other issues, you know, outside of what was stated in the memo to you.
Okay. And so that you don't see any any concerns from the department about extending another year?
No, it was approved by the planning commission and it's just an extension, which, as you mentioned, is allowed per city code, so.
Okay. Does anybody here from the applicant representing the applicant would like to speak to that? Please come up and give us your name and address and your relationship to the applicant.
Sure. My name is Andrew Stein. I am a civil engineer with Bowler. Also with me is Kayla Kenley, also with Bowler. My address or my business address is is 901 Delaney Valley Road in Towson, Maryland. And apologize on behalf of my client, Wawa, who was not able to be here tonight, but really nothing further to add. Like you said, the the commission approved this roughly a year ago, and we have been diligently working to sort out some things with S H A related to entrances and whatnot and, you know, as well as adequate public facilities and would appreciate the planning commission's concurrence in terms of granting that one-year extension as, yeah, Mr. Goins stated, is permissible by the city code.
What is the schedule looking like going forward? When do you anticipate being able to put the shovel to the ground roughly?
If my clients, they probably say they don't want to commit to an official shovel in the ground, but I would say over the we would we would roughly anticipate approvals through the course of the course of this year. I can't speak to the exact construction start date.
Sure.
But it probably probably, I would say, yeah, roughly over the next.
Right.
Three to six months.
Right.
In order to change obtain approvals and permits to.
And as far as as far as you can see now, that all the approval procedures from all the different entities are progressing in a normal fashion?
They they are. We did recently receive a letter from from Public Works related to fire flows, adequate public facilities related to that, that we're in the process of addressing and obtaining fire flow tests to to ensure that we we and my client can proceed with with the plans and construction. But but yes, moving moving appropriately.
All right. Fellow commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or of the department?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for appearing, and your application was very good. There was a couple of things I'd hoped would improve a little bit. One was the facade facing Lewis Lane, which under our code has to appear as an entrance, a front entrance, and you have two front entrances, so I understand that's a little difficult. And I was hoping you would conform with the town sign ordinance, which requires a lower sign than you're proposing. But those are relative details. I think one one of the main concerns I have is, and it's certainly not on you, but the letter you received on April 11th from the Public Works Director made the complying with the adequate public facilities very onerous. And this is a systemic issue citywide, it appears, because we don't have adequate water supply throughout the city. And as I recall, maybe a year ago, the former Public Works Director gave a presentation on the engineer's report about what's required to upgrade the water supply system, and it was a over $20 million proposition. And in your case, the your shortcut to gain approval awaiting these potential improvements by the city was to connect the 12-inch pipe along Route 40 leading to Greenway Farms and the 12-inch pipe leading to Old Bay Lane and construct a new million-gallon elevated water tank on Old Bay Lane on property that the city has not even acquired yet. So that makes the prospects of this or other projects proceeding doubtful in in the near future. Now, you do already have approval for this, and this has come up since they received approval ordinarily if and then the city engineer on May 1st said the proposed project does not meet the adequate public facilities. Now, if this were a new application, we could not approve this application because it does not meet public facilities. But so I'd be more open to an extending an approved application, especially since these matters have come up since they received their approval. But I think this is this is cautionary regarding all, especially all new proposals going forward, that we have to pay special attention to that and be realistic about what's possible and what's not and be very clear about if there are interim steps or mitigation steps available, that we understand those very clearly and see all the documentation on those. So just, you know, a form of edification here based on what we've received from the Director of Public Works.
So are you saying that we should not extend for another year?
No, I'm not saying that because this was approved and previously, and this was and this has come up since they received that approval. If this was a new application, I would say we could not approve it. But I think we could consider extending an approval, but I with the understanding that this is they have a very, very difficult road ahead and as would other projects similarly
Any response from the department on that? That concern?
No, we'll just defer to the Director of Public Works letter memo.
Commissioners, any any other questions or comments of the applicant? Now, I will go to the public. Does any anyone here from the public with regard to this particular case have any thing that they would like to say? Okay. Thank you very much.
Wait, there was one hand that went up? One hand.
Oh, I got a hand back there?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I will let her come up. Would you come up to the mic, please, and and give us your name and address, please?
Hi, good evening. My name's Jean Montgomery Johnson. I live in Chesapeake Drive 666, and I'm also, forgive me, I have a bad cold. I'm prepared, though, with cough drops.
Excuse me, ma'am. Would you pull that?
Yeah, sorry.
There you go.
I'm prepared.
Just bend it down.
Okay. Jean Johnson, 666 Chesapeake Drive. I'm also the chair of our Historic Preservation Commission. And I know there's no legal requirement for the planning board, planning commission, to look at the historic significance behind a development in our city. I just wanted to make public some of the concerns we have about it. When we first heard about the annexation of the Lamson property.
Oh, excuse me.
Back in 2022. I'm sorry?
This this is about a Wawa store up on Route 40.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing the Lamson property.
Yeah.
Ah! See, I I apologize. It's the cold is going to my head. I'll wait I'll wait till later.
Come back shortly.
I will. Thank you.
I was trying to figure out how that gas station was historic. I was I was tearing my brain out.
High concert.
Anyway, if it is if it was an old Esso station, maybe it would have fit the bill. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. And so there's no other information that we need to hear from. Okay, do I hear a motion on this request?
I move that we proceed and approve the extension for the Wawa.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion before we vote? Hearing none. I will call the roll. I'll start with Harry Miller.
Yes.
Janice Chan.
Yes.
Chip Place.
Yes.
Farhat Shah.
Yes.
Warren Hartenstein.
Yes.
Ed Guerono.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So you have another year's extension. Thank you very much and good luck with getting everything.
Thank you for your time.
The next case tonight is building permit number 2024-0333. And the location is 1535 Pulaski Highway. The applicant is Rob Holwick, Bob Ward Development LLC. And it's for a preliminary subdivision plan approval. And we're calling this the Lamson property. Is that right? Okay. I was looking at the agenda, didn't have it written on there. Now, before we get into that, I need to announce that I have an indirect conflict. Now, before we get into that, I need to announce that I have an indirect conflict with the applicants of this case, and the next case following this case, which is building permit And I recently began providing construction draw inspections in my business for some of their new home customers, not for them, but for their new home buyers that they were building homes for. Although I am engaged and paid by those customers to protect them from the applicant, they are referred to me by the applicant, and therein lies the indirect conflict. And so I will now turn it over the gavel to Vice Chair Ed Gorono, and I will go sit out in the audience until both cases are over, and you can call me back.
The Planning Commission hearing for permit number 2024-0333, the Lamson property is hereby in session. It is to review and approve the preliminary subdivision plan per the, per the city code. I guess I'd like to start off with hearing from the, from the Department, Planning Department with their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Jeff Goins, Planning Director. Good evening, community. And so as you mentioned, the address is 1 Fire 35 Pulaski Highway. We did modify the staff report slightly, so hopefully you like the new format. If not, definitely give us feedback, and we can make any changes that you'd like. But we structured it to align with the city code, so hopefully it's a little bit more structured, and I'll just, I'll talk about that as I guess I go through the report. But terms of the background for the property, it is 22.6 acres. It contains an existing vacant single-family detached dwelling that is more than 50 years old. It currently has about 13.15 acres of forest and 67 specimen trees and two identified forest stands, and there are some steep slopes on the east property line near Bayview Estates, Whitney Court, as well as a stream. The property does not have any flood plain, floodways, and is not in the Chesapeake Bay critical area. Access is currently through the Mahogany Drive in the Greenway Farms subdivision to the west. The property was annexed into the city in 2022 through Resolution Number 2022-07, and was rezoned from Harford County's G.I., General Industrial Zoning District to the city's R1 Residential District for the purpose of residential development, and that became effective on March 8, 2022. On page three of the staff report, you'll see a map showing just the general zoning in the area, and there's a chart below that that identifies the zoning as well as the land use in each direction. So to the north is R and R2 zoning, and that's mainly single-family detached dwellings. To the south is CI, Commercial Industrial, and those are commercial uses, and those are in, in Harford County. To the east is also CI, Commercial Industrial with commercial uses, and to the west is R Residential, and additionally, those are single-family detached and attached units. So as you mentioned, Chairman, the applicant's request is for a preliminary subdivision plan for 39 dwelling units, and that is using lot specification Lot D in Table 1, which allows a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and I'll talk about that more in the zoning analysis portion. And access will be through parcel N to the north in Bully Rock, so that is a new proposed access, a change from the current Mohican Drive access. On page four of the staff report, you'll see their illustrative plan, which is shown here as well. And then pursuant to Chapter 2 of the city code, "The Department of Planning as well as Public Works shall make a final determination of adequate public facilities," and there are three main categories. The first is schools. So the elementary school that serves this property is Havre de Grace Elementary, and it is currently at a capacity of 111%. And so in the scenario where it's over 110%, we have to look to the surrounding elementary schools to see if they have capacity. And the closest one is Roy Williams, and it's currently at 64% capacity. So because it has capacity, it meets adequate public facilities for schools. And the next is sewage and water. So the Department of Public Works has reviewed the preliminary subdivision plan in accordance with Chapter 2 and determined that the city's sewage is considered adequate to serve the proposed development, and in terms of the city water system, it's considered adequate due to a memorandum of understanding between the applicant that's going to provide funding to make upgrades to the booster pumps at the Grace View Water Tower. And so per Chapter 2 of the city code, if the applicant provides a funding mechanism to make improvements to bring the site into adequacy with public facilities, that is a way to meet that requirement. And in terms of roads, as I mentioned, the property will be, be accessed through Bully Rock, and when Bully Rock was originally planned, there was a traffic study that anticipated about 2,126 dwelling units, and currently 2,021 have been approved. And so the addition of the 39 dwelling units for this property will bring that to 2,060, which is below what was approved, therefore it complies with the, the roads standard. And the next section of the staff report deals with plans that are submitted concurrently with the preliminary subdivision plan, and these are approved by either the Department of Planning or the Department of Public Works, so these are staff-level approvals. And the first one is the Forest Conservation Plan, which is regulated by Chapter 81, and part of that requirement is for a forest stand delineation. And this is basically a plan that shows where all the existing trees on site are, as well as a lot of the environmental features, and the idea is to help us develop a plan or specific areas for which the Forest Conservation Plan should identify and really protect. And so that was approved on October 18th of 2023, and those are valid for five years once they're approved. And then there was a preliminary Forest Conservation Plan that was submitted and approved on April 8th of 2024. And part of that was a variance to remove some specimen trees, and seven of the trees were approved through the variance, but two were not. And so in that approval, the decision on those final two trees will be made at grading plan to see if there's some way that the applicant can grade around them and keep them. So hopefully they can. If not, we might have to reevaluate those two trees at that point, so that it's being reserved for the grading plan. And they did submit a revised preliminary Forest Conservation Plan that just changed the lot size from 23.4 acres to 22.6 acres, and that was really just to get a more accurate number. The 23.4 was not accurate. So even though it is a change, it's not really a material change, it's just really making the number more accurate to what the actual property is. And then in conjunction with the Forest Conservation Plan, the revisions to the 2019 Bully Rock Final Composite Forest Conservation Plan Summary will be required for the proposed drive. The drive that's going up to parcel N is actually going through Forest Conservation for Bully Rock, so that plan will have to be revised in order for the Lamson property to be able to be constructed. And then the next type of plan is the landscape plan, that's regulated by Chapter 102, and so that's required to be submitted and reviewed concurrently with the subdivision plan, and that is currently under review by the department. The next plan is the Stormwater Management Plan, and that is governed by Chapter 169, and that was reviewed by the Department of Public Works, and comments were provided to the applicant on March 26th of this year. So that concludes the section of the staff report that addresses the plans that are approved by departments. So the final section here is final five, it's the Preliminary Subdivision Plan Review Criteria, and so these are the criteria in which the Planning Commission will review the subdivision. So this is really, you know, your section of the, the code to review. And so the first section there is Chapter 122, Off-Street Parking, and Section 122-6 requires three off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, and each dwelling unit will be provided four parking spaces, two within the garage, and two in each driveway, and those spots comply with the dimension requirements in Section 122-5, which is 18 feet by 18 feet for two parking spaces. And in addition to the, the four spaces on each property, there will be 16 visitor parking spaces provided in two lots throughout the development. And then also Chapter 173, which is the subdivision regulations, and the first section there is Section 173-8, and within that, it requires a review for compliance with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan, which was recently adopted this year, the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, the municipal growth element, Page 6, shows this area is being developed as medium density for 40 residential lots, and since they're proposing 39 lots, it complies with the comprehensive plan. The next item in that section is the Flood Plain Management Regulations, and as I mentioned, there are no flood plain on the property, so this section does not apply. It's Chapter 78. And as I mentioned, there's, it's not within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay District, so Chapter 49 does not apply. And then the next sections are Section 173, 10 through 14, and these are related to streets, roads, and the associated improvements. And so all the proposed roads and rights of way will be private and part of the Bully Rock HOA, and those are required to comply with the Harford County Road Code for design standards, and we reviewed those, and in terms of right-of-way widths, pavement widths, lot frontage on right-of-ways, I mean, everything complies with the code as we reviewed it. They are providing sidewalks on both sides of the road throughout the development, and on one side of the private road A, which links up to parcel N. The lighting will be provided in accordance with the Harford County Road Code and the Bully Rock HOA regulations. It must comply with Section 205-11G of the city code regarding a .05-foot candle of glare measured at the respective property lines. And then all lots but a street, except for lots 36, 37, 38, and 39, which are on a common drive, and the code allows for up to four lots to be on a, on a common drive, so it complies with that standard. And then the final section in 173 is 14.1, which addresses open space, and it references Section 205 of the code, and the code doesn't require open space for single-family detached, it's only for townhomes. But they are providing an active open space lot just at the southern portion of the subdivision. And then the final section is Chapter 205, which is the zoning regulations, and so in order to use lot specification type D, which is the 5,000-square-foot lot size, that's a conditional use in the zoning regulations, and so on January 4th of 2024, the Board of Appeals approved the conditional use to use the 5,000-square-foot lot size, and that was for 37 detached lots at the time. And then in April of this year, the Board of Appeals approved an increase from 37 to 39 lots. That's how we got to the 39 lots. And then the lot dimensions, the setbacks, the height, the lot coverage, they're all in compliance with lot specification type D. There's a table that identifies the bulk regulations and what's required, and it complies with those. So based on our review of the code sections, we recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision plan as provided, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the commissioners before we move on to the applicant's presentation?
I do have two questions.
Yes, sir. These questions would be for the department.
So remind me, the traffic study that allowed, you know, where you got the counts of 2,000, can you tell me the date of that traffic study?
I will defer to the applicant for that specific information.
Fair enough.
Are you talking about the number of homes?
Yes.
Okay, that's different, right? It's the number of homes that were originally approved?
Correct. There was a traffic study with, when Bully Rock was, you know, originally planned out.
So we're saying 2,001?
I would defer to the applicant for the specific date. Just, okay. Misstated, yeah.
It's on the, it's on your, in your remarks here. The, the number of homes that were approved originally for the subdivision was...
No, I got that. I just wanted the date.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, there's reasons why I care, and I'll let the other one go right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that both these parcels are both going to have access to Bully Rock Parkway?
If you look at the site plan that's provided...
Yeah, I've been going through that, I'm trying to figure out where it comes out, because it looks...
Sure. If you look on page four, you'll see their site plan. And if you look at the top left-hand corner, you'll see what was approved as parcel N in Bully Rock, and they're proposing a new driveway that will connect up through that.
A new driveway? Okay, that's what I was wondering about, because, so it's going to be, instead of having the separate road that runs along the bottom, they're going to all have everything connected to that one road?
Yeah, I believe when they originally presented to you last year, they were showing a connection through Greenway on Mohican Drive. They've modified that to go up north through parcel N.
Except for those four, four lots, just those four that are near the historic house, correct?
Those lots will also use this new driveway.
And perhaps the applicant will cover that some more as well. Anybody, anything else more for the department question? Okay.
I have quite a few, unless anybody else on the commission has any questions.
Well, I just, you know, we're going to have the applicant next, so.
Yeah.
Should we wait for that, or should the, are these department questions?
There are more department questions.
Okay.
And process questions.
Okay.
Okay. First is, and thank you, and welcome, Director Goins.
Thank you.
Before I say another thing. My first comment is on, and this isn't much for the commissioners as for the department, it's just on basic notice that we're required to give under Chapter 25 of the city code, which is the Planning Commission's responsibilities. Notice of a public hearing on any Planning Commission matter shall be given by certified mail and by first-class mail to the petitioner, the owner of the property, and all abutting and confronting owners of property under consideration at least 15 days prior to the date of the hearing. Notice shall also be published on the city website at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. And notice shall be posted on the property under consideration 15 days prior to the date. Now, I've mentioned this to the department a number of times. When you look at the notice that's in on the website, which is the same agenda that we've been provided, there's no mention of a public hearing. And in fact, it says, "The public is invited to attend and observe the meeting," not, not invited to speak. So it would tend to, it doesn't announce that there's a public hearing, and it would tend to discourage the public from participating. Now, we have a good crowd tonight, so I guess the word got out, but I would seriously recommend that, not only with this application, but applications going forward, that they clearly state, the notice clearly states that there's a public hearing, and that there would be an opportunity to, to speak. And given the lack of notice here, I, I think this matter needs to be held over just on that matter alone until proper notice is provided. Moving on to Lance.
Excuse me. Jeff, did you want to address that?
Um, per city code, it wasn't noticed properly, so I'm not sure exactly what the concern is.
Well, it doesn't mention public hearing, and it, it says the public can only come, attend, attend and observe. And now when we do, the city council does public hearings, it's very clear, but this is not clear at all. This is, you're just, public's allowed to come and observe, and that this is not a public hearing.
Well, in the code, there's no requirement for what is included in the public notification.
Well, it says, "Notice of the public hearing shall be posted on the city's website."
And it was.
And we, we are going to allow the public to speak.
Right.
Tonight.
Right. Okay.
We can definitely make the change to the notice to make it more clear, but in terms of the public note for, for this hearing, it was done properly per city code.
Yeah, I, I disagree. It says nothing about a public hearing. Okay, moving on. We have a, you mentioned the landscape sustainable ordinance. And part of that, and a landscape plan is required to be submitted with the preliminary subdivision application. And part of the landscape sustainable ordinance, it's even more, it's even tighter than the forest conservation law in that trees over six inches in caliper shall be maintained and preserved and incorporated into the overall planning design where feasible. And this application, like almost every application I see, makes no reference to six-inch trees, does not identify six-inch trees. And there must be a justification provided for removal of six-inch trees. So this site has a lot of old growth forest in it. It has some second-generation forest. But even the second-generation forest is trees over six inches. A lot of them are 12 inches. The area where the new road would come in, there's no identification of trees whatsoever. And I went out this weekend and looked along the area, what looked like the area of clearing. I noticed at least, and measured at least 10 trees that qualify as specimen trees. That's 30 inches in diameter or more. And most of the trees through there are very mature. It's a very mature forest. And no attempt has been made to identify those trees or other trees. And in addition, there's, you know, there's some trees that are very unique to the farm landscape, like the old farm lane going in. And you'll notice that the comprehensive plan makes reference to those kind of special landscape features as items to preserve. So in road sections, they're just typical road sections. They don't extend out into the landscape. So you have a feeling for what the landscape might be and what's impacted. There's none of that provided. And nor even where trees are identified to be protected is the landscape requirements under the landscape ordinance for, you know, keeping trees back of drip line. All those factors, they're not provided. And that's how you make sure you're preserving those trees. So we need better definition of the trees impacted. And when the applicant came for a concept plan review a year ago, we specifically requested that, and I don't expect them to survey every six-inch tree, but at least flag the limits of disturbance in the field. So people have a real understanding of what it is. But absent any of that, we have no information. And so the application's defective. Moving on to forest conservation, you mentioned an approval of the forest conservation plan by your predecessor a year ago.
Correct.
Now, under the city code, a preliminary forest conservation plan is required to be submitted with a preliminary subdivision plan under Chapter 81. And so, and then a final conservation plan is submitted with the final plan, the final subdivision plan. So, and where we are right now is we're at the preliminary subdivision phase. And so it's only now where a preliminary conservation plan can be heard or entertained. So any prior approval is really ineffective and certainly can't be considered binding on the planning commission. And why this is important is because the information provided, the forest conservation plan, preliminary conservation plan, the adequate public facilities, traffic reports, all those pieces of information are important in the planning commission's overall consideration of the plan. It's important to the, it's fundamental information to evaluating the basic layout of the plan that's presented. And that's what good planning is about. You need to have all the information so you can properly evaluate just the basic layout of the subdivision. So there's some preliminary, I mean, in fact, we received a drawing that's preliminary conservation. And to that extent, the drawing is good. All your, by the way, all your drawings are really good. They're well-presented. But again, the whole road coming in from parcel N, there's no information whatsoever on the landscape there, on the trees. These trees I identified, the specimen trees are not identified. The limits of disturbance are not identified. So the application is deficient on that. Until we have more information, we cannot really, so we certainly can't approve this tonight. We might, we could deny, or our options tonight are deny, approve, deny, or approve with conditions, or maybe cable this matter. But certainly, we're not in a position to approve this tonight. One thing back to the notice, let me, I'm sorry. Were the people along Mohican Drive provided with notice?
A notice went to the HOA.
The HOA.
There's an open space, you know, HOA property in between the homes.
Okay. I saw that. And, you know, it says abutting or confronting. And, you know, all those houses, you wouldn't know there's a little strip of HOA. But there's dozens of houses that back right up to this road that's coming down from parcel N, this new road. So I would hope the people on, and that's again why even the public notes, it's really important for people to understand what this is.
That's one reason why we have multiple, you know, avenues for public notification. We have signs, we have mailings. So it's to try to capture everyone, even though you may not be able to receive a notification, there is a sign to help folks, yeah.
You don't have to, I don't want to take the time for you to give it, but it would be good to know where, in the past, we've seen where the signs were posted. So that's a good thing to include in your application, in your materials. Now, you talk about the Bully Rock Wide Forest Conservation Plan. And you're suggesting that the forest conservation plan for the new road coming in is somehow related to the Bully Rock Forest Conservation Plan, the master plan. And I think, as I've said to you before, and as I just said now, you know, all the forest conservation plans have to be approved at the subdivision level. They are, and that's what's required under our city code. And our city code is based on the model state code. So pursuing this Bully Rock Wide Master Plan, Forest Conservation Plan, is not really the way the code is written and what's required. And why that is important is because, you know, it's at the subdivision level that you see specimen trees, that you see if development is occurring on steep slopes, that you see if the developer's building is clearing within, say, an intermittent stream or wetland. And we've seen that at Bully Rock. We've specimen trees and clearing on steep slopes. And so it's just, it's not effective. And it's not a way to file, and it doesn't meet the requirements of the city code or the state code. So in particular, and since this strip of land that's already designated forest retention, as is the area south of where the existing detention pond is, all that L shape where road A is going is existing forest retention area. That has been identified as forest retention, even in what I consider the defective master plan for Bully Rock. So all that, it's already, it's already been decided that that is forest retention land. So it's problematic in the first place to even consider building in that forest retention land since it has been identified as forest retention. And if there is going to be a reconsideration of the forest conservation plan through that area, that information has to be provided with the preliminary subdivision application. So the specimen trees have to be identified, all the other criteria, and the justification for removing specimen trees has to be provided with that forest conservation plan. So it would not be proper or correct to continue the poor practice of approving this on the master plan subdivision level for Bully Rock when this is clearly part of the Lamson subdivision application. And by the way, for those interested, you know, a council member asked me the other night, "Well, doesn't the forest conservation law work so that any forest that's removed has to be replaced in kind?" And I said, "You know, council member, I don't think that's the case because the way these formulas work, it really ends up being a forest destruction law once you get past forest retention." And here's what the numbers were at the Bully Rock at the overall level. There was 567 acres of existing forest at Bully Rock. And 409 of those 567 were removed. That left 158 acres in retention, including this little, the L-shaped strip. And how does that work in terms of the formula for mitigating that? Only 99 acres were required to be replaced. So we lost 42% of the forest cover at Bully Rock and 17% is being replanted. Now, I'm going to, I'll be a little sympathetic towards the applicant because they bought into Bully Rock under these overall guidelines. And they made an investment based on that. But that's not a reason to proceed further on Lamson. Lamson was nothing to do with Bully Rock. And so these practices should not be continued on the Lamson.
Why don't we hear from the applicant, Chip?
All right. Sure.
Was that, would you suggest that, April?
I would just allow the department, because a question was posed somewhere in there. There was a question. So maybe before you move to the applicant, let Mr. Goins respond. And then when the applicant comes up, don't forget to swear them in.
The applicant?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so there were multiple parts to those statements. First, I'll just take the six-inch requirement from Section 102.6. So the department's interpretation of that, because that's the landscape section. So we have forest conservation, then we have the landscape section, right? And the forest conservation is mandated by the state and it requires you to preserve all specimen trees, which are 30 inches or greater. And then we have a landscape ordinance that talks about how you provide landscaping on-site, parking lots, street trees, things of that nature. And so the interpretation by the department has been that that six-inch requirement, anything between 6 and 30 inches, applies outside of forest conservation because we have a forest conservation ordinance that addresses what's in forest. So the six-inch does not apply in forest conservation. So that's been the department's interpretation of that over the years. In terms of the Bully Rock Forest Conservation Plan, you're allowed to repeal a forest conservation plan and then have one re-approved. So to the extent they have surplus forests, they are able to repeal and replace as long as the formulas and the numbers work out with conservation as well as afforestation. And in terms of just who approves these, you know, per city code, the department's approved these. The planning commission does not approve these. So the landscape plan, the forest conservation plan, the stormwater management plan, those are all per city code approved by the department. So those are just my comments on your statements.
Well, I'll just add that the planning commission has broad discretion to approve the application. And these are all factors, you know, adequate public facilities, adequacy of roads. All these are considerations as to whether this proceeds to where the department has the authority to approve or deny. And you don't, and the department doesn't have the opportunity to approve or deny until we get to final subdivision. And, but we at preliminary subdivision have to make the decision whether to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. So it doesn't get to you until it gets passed the planning commission.
Did you want to speak to that?
All I would say is that to the extent the planning commission does make conditions of approval, they need to be within the purview of the planning commission's city code and state law authority. They can't approve, they can't require a condition that's not in the purview of their review process.
All right. Then I'd say we could move on to the applicant then. This swearing-in that you talked about, April, could you give me a hand with that?
Technically, it's the chair's job. But what you're going to ask them is ask them to affirm that the testimony they're about to receive is the truth to the best of their ability.
Okay. So if the applicant would like to speak, please step up.
For both of them?
Say that again?
Is the testimony you're about to...
Is the testimony you're about to give...
True to the best of your ability.
True to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to go first?
Yeah, I'm Robert Holwick with Bob Ward. My office address is 2700 Philadelphia Road, Edgewood, Maryland. And so I'm the one that works with, putting the plans together with James from MRA. And there's been a lot of gray areas on this and everything. So I'll let James present the plan.
Okay.
And then fill in where needed.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Kiefer. I'm a registered landscape architect and associate with Morrison Ritchie Associates. Excuse me. I don't know what's going on with my throat. Our business address is 3445A Box Hill Corporate Center Drive in Addington, Maryland. What, let me move this one for a minute. This is actually parcel N. And we'll use that to explain how they're connected to Bully Rock Parkway. I believe that was the question. So I think you're familiar. This is the parcel that actually makes up the Lamson property. It currently has a gravel driveway that connects, used to connect, well, across a railroad track that has been abandoned. Now connects to an access drive to Mohican Drive through the Greenway Farms development. This has come before you with a drive that came...
Sir, could you grab that mic there? Yes, please.
As you saw this before, the access was taken through this rather narrow emergency access drive onto Mohican. And then it would have accessed off the Route 40 that way. It has been decided to annex this property into the Bully Rock HOA. And as part of that, we're looking now at extending this road across an existing stormwater management facility, which will be reconstructed. And then along to connect into the, what was the cul-de-sac for...
Sunday Silence.
N on Sunday Silence. And we'll talk about this specifically later. But that road that I was just pointing at is coming here. It's connecting to the cul-de-sac for Sunday Silence on parcel N. And then it will continue all the way to Bully Rock Parkway. And we'll talk more specifically about that. As, I'll just put it down. As part of that connection, we're looking at connecting it with pedestrian access, with the sidewalk that continues up and all the way. And then we'll run along Sunday Silence all the way to Bully Rock Parkway. There's another access point that we're looking at connecting from Peace Chance with a trail, not a road, that would connect into here. There's an easement that is to be granted for a future trail that the city has desired to connect Greenway Farms all the way over eventually to Lewis Lane. As I understand it, all the way to the high school and the schools. So as was mentioned, we had this as a 37-lot subdivision. Went back to the Board of Appeals because they had limited it to 37 to the proposed 39 that we're proposing now. The existing house is right in this location. It is one of the panhandle lots. So it'll be set back off the road. And it will be rehabilitated. It has had some damage done to it with it being vacant for years. Got anything else?
Yeah. Do you have any ways of addressing the concerns about the forest conservation areas and that?
So James did, you know, we had... It's a tree measure. So you did go out and look at the trees along the proposed access?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll let him describe his findings.
Yeah, we walked, we walked the, let me give me that one again. We walked this area where the proposed road is. We noticed that there are some specimen trees that are along the property line between Greenway Farms and us. But those are in an adjacent... But those are in, and adjacent to the existing 20-foot wide drainage and utility easement, which is part, there's a sewer line that runs there. There's a forest main that comes in and then there's a gravity sewer that serves most of Bully Rock. And so we've approximated where this clearing limit would be off of where the sewer line is, and we didn't find any specimen trees in the area that we're proposing to clear as part of this development for this access drive. There are 67 specimen trees on the Lamson property, which we currently have submitted an application for a variance or a modification to impact nine of those. And as was mentioned, there are two here that we've been asked to look further about when we get to final engineering and final grading for it. In terms of this area and the impacts to the forest, we have submitted last Friday, the ninth, a modification to the overall forest conservation plan, which is with the department for review. We have set it as a draft version so that they are not necessarily under the 45-day review period because they thought it would take longer to review it. And as part of that, two predecessors. When Shane Grimm was here, we had a discussion that it was hard to look at the entire Bully Rock parcel in the 300 scale, which is what the original approved plan was. And so we agreed to do 100-scale versions of the entire Bully Rock development. And that has been done. So it's gone from a two-sheet plan to a seven-sheet plan. Hence why it's a little difficult to review it and understand it all.
So does it, does that, this sounds like you and the department are working through this, these issues?
We believe so.
Is that your understanding, Jeff?
There was a draft plan submitted to us. Obviously, it's very technical, it's a very large property, so we haven't had a chance to really dig into it and analyze it yet. And it was obviously submitted after the staff report was issued, so it wasn't part of this review or submittal, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I just have two clarifications.
Sure.
So the seven specimen trees of the seven specimen trees, four were dead?
Yeah, three, yeah.
So I think there was only two of the seven that were in good condition. The rest were dead or dying or had the vines all over them. Then the clarity on this proposed access, you can't really see, but there's 30 to 40 feet of clearing there already. So there's a 20, 20-foot sewer main coming down behind Greenway Farms, which is overgrown, okay? The city did not maintain that line. So those trees should never be there and will be removed prior next year or two because it's over a sewer main. Then there's a 30 to 40-foot clearing that runs down, then the wood starts. So the problem we're having is stormwater that we don't know how much of the forest, is it gonna be 10 feet, 20 feet, 26 feet? We don't know until the stormwater gets done. But as it looks on the plan, it looks like it's all forested now, but it's, it's at least 30, maybe 40 feet of clear. And Chip can, he walked it, he can confirm that.
It's about 30 feet.
Okay.
But, but Robert, measuring just, you know, we had very little information on your drawings, but it looked like there was potentially about 90 feet of clearing total, including that 30 feet. And it looked like it went from the fence into the woods, so that's, you know, maybe 50 feet into the woods.
We're, we're looking at a 40-foot right away?
But we're clearing for the swale and all that. And by the way, Mr. Keith, I've measured some specimen trees on both sides of the clearing. So that's why it's important for you all to provide, you know, real, detailed drawings of the actual limits of disturbance and, you know, identifying the trees along the way. And the, you know, the, a typical section certainly doesn't do that. It's got a, you gotta, I mean, you did a good job on the, the original Lamson parcel. You have to do the same job through this stretch here.
Yeah. Well, I was looking at the, the typical detail and we're trying to make it as narrow of the impact as possible. So we're basically gonna put the one side of the road on grade, cante it towards the drainage swell and then back up. And it's relatively flat through there.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Is, do you have any other comments or thoughts or any other experts you'd like to speak to?
On the historic dwelling, we did meet the Havering Grace Historic Society folks out there a few years ago.
Okay.
Along with staff, city staff, to tour the house. So the, the house was built in four phases, so there is historic value there. So we've decided to, when it was in the county, we were looking at demoing it. And once it was annexed into the city, then we decided to keep it. So it will be restored. So that, and it's gonna be like a park-like setting on the house. It's gonna be on a three-quarter acre lot roughly, something, yeah. So it's a good-sized lot.
Okay.
So that, that's very important. So I know that's a concern, so we reached out. Then the 20-foot easement for a future trail from Greenway Farms over to Lewis Lane, I guess is what the city's trying to do. That's been coming up over the years. So we went ahead and put that on the plan and we're planning to put it on grade. And then it would be up to the city, if they ever decide to do it, to, to improve it. And then we're also looking, a lot of folks on Peace Chance, they already, since we've been involved, we got involved the fall, summer and fall of 2019, is, is trespassers coming into Bully Rock. Okay? So what we're looking to do is put a, a security fence down along Greenway Farms and along the railroad to, to help prevent people from coming up. So that's gonna benefit Bully Rock and, and mostly the folks on Peace Chance.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Just one other thing because it was mentioned. We have some additional visitor parking provided there. We have some here. We've got a pavilion shown for a mailbox, cluster mailbox location, and then a small area that we're gonna grade out just for an active open space area in addition to, of course, all the amenities that Bully Rock has in it.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Historic house that you were referring to? Yeah. The historic house that you were referring to, what is the plan for it after it's restored?
We would, well, we were looking at either finding someone who's interested in restoring it from start to finish, or we're considering stabilizing it, finishing the outside, get the outside all done because it's, it's gonna be a million-dollar property. I mean, it's gonna be expensive, if not more. So we haven't decided yet, but the Bully Rock mansion, there's folks out there that seek older homes and like the challenge. So that's what we're looking to do is, is to stabilize it. So we had termite inspections done. The shell of the house is very sound, okay? But the vandalism, it's been hit hard three times, okay? So it's basically a shell now.
The second question is, there has been a lot of meetings that we've had, the people who live over in that area have requested a walkway along the railroad to, as you, you address that, over to Lewis Lane. Are you guys, your company, are you the ones who are gonna put this in? Are you just gonna acknowledge the easement and let that be?
Well, there's, there's, when you're building trails, the, the big cost is, is, is the grading and getting them ready for a base stone and paving or whatever. So we're proposing to get the grading done, have it all done. And whenever the city, because you gotta get your continuing easement over to Lewis Lane, then 10, 20, whenever the city would do it. So right now, it'd be a, a trail of nowhere.
So it'd just be, just graded, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, be graded.
Just graded.
And stabilize. Ready, ready for stone and paving.
I'm real familiar with the mom-pa trail, so I'm real familiar with how they do that and how long it takes. I was just wondering if that is something that you were planning on doing or?
Well, what we're doing is the most expensive part of it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Chip?
I'll pick up a little bit where I left off before. Lack, the adequate public facilities. Now, in April, the Director of Public Works issued a letter that said that upgrades were required of the, is it Glenview Pump Station?
Grace, Grace.
Graceview, sorry. Thank you, Robert. And that, you know, if the city did it on its own, it'd be at least two years. And then he qualified that further by saying there, the city's expecting a consultant report in June, which would really identify the extent of the need and the problems further. So, and any preliminary subdivision approval is only valid for three years, but it may be extended for two more, subject to all adequate facilities being in place. So, but then from our staff report, we learned that you all had committed 1.8 million to upgrade the Graceview Water Tower and that there was an MOU to that effect. But we have not seen a further report from the Director of Public Works, nor have we seen the MOU itself. So it would be, before we proceeded further on this, just on that issue alone, it would be good to see the MOU and it would be good to have verification from the Department of Public Works that everything is indeed adequate that way. And to clarify on that, whether the MOU is strictly related to upgrades of that water tower, I'd also understood that Bob Ward Companies was perhaps entering in an MOU to help upgrade the pump station too, including maybe at, at Native Dancer. So it would be good to understand what's what there and certainly to see the MOU, to see what the terms of that MOU are and how that might be affecting anything regarding Lamson other than just providing the adequate water facilities. And then talking about road access, you had previously been proposing to go out to Route 40, which was the, you know, the historic entrance to the Lamson property. So coming up through that forest retention area and then through Bully Rock is very, a total change. Why are we not going through as originally contemplated, going out to Route 40 as, as the traditional entrance there?
So I can talk to the MOUs. So we are providing the funding source for the upgrades to the Graceview pump stations. It's the pumps that need improved, okay? So that, that's, that, we've been working on that for some time. It was the sewer, then it was the water, and then it was the sewer, then it was the water. So on the water zones, there's Zone 1, which runs along 40, that's where the Wawa is. So that's, that's where the city needs a new standpipe, a new water tower. Zone 2 is the Bully Rock tank. That's the Graceview up to the Bully Rock tank. So that's, with Lamson, we could tie in to either Zone 1 or Zone 2, okay? So we have the option of either way. So 18 months ago, it was Zone 1, then it's like, oh, now you gotta go to Zone 2 now. So fortunately, we have that option. So that's, that's where I'm pretty sure we'll have our MOU done here this month or next month at the latest for, for the funding source.
Okay.
Now, history is the Bully Rock, when it was built, accounted for Greenway Farms, Lamson, okay? And Bully Rock. So all those monies by previous developers, the water tower, the pumps and all that, the Native Dancer pump station, the regional Northwest pump station was all paid for by the Bully Rock developers. So over the years, people outside the gate hooked in. Some of it wasn't maintained properly, but when we bought Bully Rock, that was all in the deal, okay? And so now we're being told we need to put additional funds in, okay? So we, we're doing that, but Lamson was in that original plan on there. Then your, what was your last question?
Well, I'll, I'll give you that. That's why it'd really be good to have clarification directly from the Director of Public Works on this and to see the MOU. And it might be even helpful to have, this is very complicated. It might be helpful to have the Director of Public Works here at a next meeting so we can query him. That's something that the Planning Commission, if we wish, can, can request.
It, it seems to me that many of these things are really the sole responsibility of the staff and the developer to work out various parts of this, correct?
Yes, but I think, you know, all this, the adequate public facilities has to be demonstrated to the Planning Commission too. So it would be, that's why it'd be good to, you know, see this all written down and, and see for, you know?
The city is where the engineers and the planners are that have, you know, instituted all this all along. So, I mean, I'm not sure that we as the Planning Commission are qualified to, you know, make those judgments and that's why we count on the, the city and their staff, correct?
Absolutely. But again, we need to, the applicant has to demonstrate adequate public facilities to the satisfaction of the ci, the city engineer. So that's why it's good to have, you know, that kind of verification on paper. All right. So I was asking about the road access.
Right. So the road access to Mohegan, so Martha Lewis Drive or Boulevard, I guess it is, is the only access into Greenway Farms.
Right.
So with the buildout of Greenway Farms, the intersection at 40 has, has been problematic.
Right.
Okay? So in looking at, looking at more of Mohegan Drive, this is not a very friendly access drive with all the townhouses, the high-density homes there. The Lamson property is exceptional, so it's, it's, once you get back there and you walk it, Chip walked it, you can see it's extraordinary.
That's beautiful.
Extraordinary property. So with that, we were looking at, well, Mr. Ward is Bob's declarant still of Bully Rock. So he has the right to annex properties in, in the HOA docs into Bully Rock, okay? So we figured out a way how, how to make it work without, because we were looking at Peace Chance Drive originally, not building on a lot and making a connection in the Peace Chance Drive, okay? But there's a lot of homes on Peace Chance Drive. There's no sidewalks. There's only one access point and it's, it's really congested for people at the bottom to get, to get out there. So with us connecting Sunday Silence, it runs right out to the Parkway, okay? So Lamson's not impacting any existing homes until it gets to the Parkway, which is a collector road, okay? So that's, and then also connectivity for sidewalks. So Bully Rock was approved without sidewalks, okay, because of the trail system, all right? So you have people walking in the road all the time, all right? So we decided to do sidewalks on one side of Sunday Silence, do a, we So, we decided to do sidewalks on one side of Sunday Silence, do a, we call it the Bully Rock paved sidewalk, which is asphalt, all the way down the access. Once we get to Lamson, this was approved not under the master concept plan of Bully Rock from '03, it was approved by itself. So, that's where we pick up the sidewalks on both sides per city code, okay? And some different setbacks and all that, because this, this is being annexed into Bully Rock, but not under their special exception they got, or whatever, back in '03.
Not under the planned adult community portion of the code.
Is what they called it, yeah. So, there's some things here, like, in Bully Rock, there's no private common drives. So, common drives, there's nothing in, in Bully Rock right now, so we would have a separate agreement for that. We're talking about a, perhaps a separate agreement for the access drive, okay? Because again, folks back here get the benefit, but the downside of that is we're, we're doing the connectivity with the sidewalks, so then, would, would these people allow other people to walk down the road or their sidewalks, you know? So, we, we'll work that out with, with the board. Open space is another thing, is, is this, all this area is open space. This is where, so when we first looked at it, I go, who planted all these specimen trees? So, someone deliberately planted those in a row, okay? I mean, it's, it's extraordinary. So, we were, out of 67 specimens, we're impacting nine, which is unheard of. But we were able, James creativity, to get this done, and it's nice, pleasant, and we're protecting all those specimen trees. And those specimen trees, the ones near the historic house have the vines on them, and, and down towards the railroad, they have the bitter-sweet orange vines, and the wisteria, which is killing them. But the ones further back are, are in good health. So, we would take the invasive species off of the Lamson property. But if you walk back there, there's a rock cropping and all that, and all that's being protected.
Right. So, but back to the road, though. Understanding that Bob Ward Companies can, has the ability to annex additional property into the HOA, the choice of the, how to get in and out of the Lamson property is a choice, which route, whether it's from Route 40 or through Bully Rock. So, I mean, that's something to evaluate as part of the subdivision application. What, what, what more broadly is, is the better route to go into?
We definitely feel Bully Rock. And to get back to the traffic study, so when the property was purchased in December of 2019, the Emerald Downs parcel, which is out near the front gate, had 140 garden condominiums, okay, 140.
Right.
So, we took that 140 number down to 49 villas, okay? So, right there, you took 91 lots off the table, 91 units off the table. Then, parcel, parcel N, Sunday Silence, had 55 villas, okay? So, we originally took that number down to 41 detached singles. And now, we took it to 40, because to provide the access, we lost a lot. And that's why Lamson picked up two lots, okay? But between the garden condominiums of 91 units, and then we took 15 units off of parcel N. So, you have 106 units, we could, we could be building there right now. And then we're adding back 30, 39.
Right. So, you know, and full disclosure, I do live on Bully Rock Parkway. So, I see the construction, and we talk about this a lot in the Building and Grounds Committee at Bully Rock with you, Robert. You know, it's always a little bit of a struggle to, to control that. But, and you make a good point, there, there were more units originally in Bully Rock, but all those units were up at parcel K, right by the main gate. And so, those people would've gone right in and out. But here, there's, you know, just adding Lamson just extends traffic and, and construction traffic further into Bully Rock, where, and we're still, you know, trying to finish out the condos there, and, and Sunday Silence is definitely, still is to go. So, so putting the road through, and the, putting the road through that, the woods there has environmental impact, is talked about too. So, there, there certainly are remain impacts. And one other impact to Bully Rock is the extra cost to the HOA in adding Lamson, and particularly a long new road that, a private road that the HOA will have to maintain. So, that, that's a further consideration that, you know, that the HOA has to think about. Couple more, just touching briefly on emergency access and the pedestrian connection. Basically, what we're creating here, now, when you were coming out, first of all, the grading of the curve on, on Road A, it looks like it's elevated above the existing old farm lane there, is that correct? Right at the curve there is across is the old farm lane?
The road is elevated here because it's going on the pond embankment.
Right.
So, it's coming down.
So, it doesn't meet grade at the old farm lane?
It's probably close to it there.
All right. Yeah, what I'm getting at is...
It's still embank, it's still part of the embankment because this, this swale that's taking the stormwater from the road is draining across where the old farm.
Right. So, what I'm getting at is, the way the road was, I mean, you were coming right out to Greenway Farms before. It doesn't look like now you have the potential for an emergency egress, the way the road is, is banked there. And so, you're creating essentially a 28, 2,800 dead end, foot dead end to, before you get even to the first house in Lamson, which far exceeds a 600-foot cul-de-sac.
As cul-de-sacs are measured, this cul-de-sac would be from here. This cul-de-sac would be from there, because there's a T there. And in terms of emergency access, currently, the emergency access between Sunday Silence and Greenway Farms is off of
Right.
where the cul-de-sac was. And part of this, both of these projects, is to improve, make it a wider emergency access.
Right.
And also make it so it's not as steep.
So, it's, it's a very long dead end that you're creating there, to get all the way back to Lamson, which really, I think exceeds, well exceeds, the subdivision regulations.
There's only been one way into Bully Rock on either, on the resident's side. So, if you live all the way back to River Downs, Ferdinand, or, you only have one egress, and you have all those people to go through, okay?
Yeah, now, that's a problem.
Yeah, right.
And so, now, it's good that there's a Sunday Silence egress, and then I think over on parcel P, there's also emergency egress.
Parcel P is...
So, that helps.
That will, we're gonna start that site work next month, and that will connect to Willow Way. That would be the first emergency access gate, I guess, in the city.
Right.
Because if Emergency Services Scott, he didn't, I've been working with him, so that's gonna be the first gate. Then, on, on the existing driveway, okay, so, we, originally, we're gonna put the new road where the existing drive is. But that goes right behind the homeowners on Peace Chance Drive. So, there was an uproar over that. So, that's where we relocated the road away from their homes.
Okay. I, I think it's still a problem as a long dead end. And then, on the pedestrian, that connection, I do appreciate you including consideration of that, because as Janice said, there was major, we had a lot of comments about kids walking on the railroad tracks to get to Lewis Lane. But just kind of putting something along the edge of the railroad tracks where there's a steep embankment, and that's, you know, that's pretty thick woods all the way through there. It would work much better if you could just include, you know, just even a wider sidewalk as, as part of the, the, the old road, the new road through the site. And that's what made, you know, the old entrance via Greenway Farms more useful that way, because there was a public road, and then you could put a sidewalk in there, and then the kids could walk along sidewalk, and you could make a connection to the adjoining property, and hopefully eventually out to Lewis Lane, so...
So, you're gonna have the trespassers coming into Bully Rock.
Yeah, that's...
And we're putting a security fence up to take care of that, so that...
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not an ideal solution, is what I'm saying.
Well, ideally, you would put a security fence up and do the sidewalks, but...
Well, ideally, you would, you would continue, well, not ideally for some people, but when you had the public road coming in from Greenway Farms, you had a sidewalk along it, and then you could've put, and I think the original, original plan was to put a berm or something, or a fence between that road and, and Peace Chance, which would've...
I bet we're limited because of the sewer main and stormwater.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying, it's not quite ideal yet.
Chip, we need to move on.
I know, I know. So, I'll have some recommendations, but maybe we can hear from the public, too.
Commissioners, any other commissioners have any questions now at this stage? Or any thoughts from the department? Nope. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Just for the record, you may recall about a year ago, we, the Planning Commission, pressed hard on our department to look again at getting across the, over to Route 40 without going through the tunnel. And we, it was considered an impossibility, that's basically what we were told. And yet, at our insistence, it was, they pressed, and they went the political route, and got a meeting with CSX, who completely refused any consideration of accessing across the railroad
To Route 40.
To Route 40. So, that's an option that's nice to talk about, but...
It's not possible, is what I would call that, so, fair enough. Okay, I guess we should get the public comments here, we're getting late. So, young lady in the front here, first, with your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Zerby, and I live at 221 Smarty Jones, Bully Rock. I'm a board member, resident board member, and I'm here with my friend Steve, who is also a board member, and the other resident board member, Jim, is on vacation and was not able to make it. So, I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of our residents, and share a few thoughts and comments that we've received from the residents. I'm gonna read this, because I think it'll be faster than trying to remember it. Number one, tree clearing and forest preservation. The proposed access road from Sunday Silence will result in the removal of approximately two acres of existing forest between Peace Chance and Greenway Farms. Residents are concerned about the environmental and privacy impacts, and have asked that any clearing comply with HDG Chapter 102-6 regarding the protection of nat, of natural features. We respectfully ask the commission to support an access alignment and design that minimizes disruption and preserves as much of the natural buffer as possible. Privacy impact. Since this parcel was not expected initially to be part of Bully Rock development, residents adjacent to the forest area did not have a reasonable expectation of a road being constructed behind their homes. We ask that the commission give serious consideration to access and layout options that minimize the impact on resident privacy, especially considering the unique circumstances around this annexation. Street lighting. In Bully Rock, street lighting is limited to main thoroughfares and shared spaces in neighborhood streets, and neighborhood streets are intentionally not lit, with homeowners required to keep driveway lamp posts on from dusk to dawn. We request that no additional streetlights be included in the plan for the Lamson section to keep it consistent with the character and nighttime aesthetic of the existing community. Speed and safety. We request that the developer be required to post 25 mile, 25 mile-per-hour speed limit signs on the access road to maintain a safe residential traffic patterns. Sidewalk configuration. Many existing Bully Rock streets have sidewalks on one side only. Residents have asked if the developer can be granted a waiver to install sidewalks on just one side, consistent with the existing design. Long-term maintenance. The community is concerned about the future costs of maintaining additional infrastructure, such as the new access road, mailbox pavilion, shared driveways, and walking paths. With this buildout still approximately 65 homes short of the original plan, it represents a meaningful revenue gap that will need to be factored into future operating and reserve budgets. Access alignment. While some have questioned whether access through Gateway Farms would reduce impacts, we do not support that approach. It would shift, it would shift impacts to a neighboring community without providing Bully Rock with a direct communication to the new homes. We believe the current alignment, while not perfect, can be redefined to reduce impacts without transferring the burden unfairly to others. We appreciate the openness Bob Ward and Robert Holwick have shown in their meetings with the resident board members, and believe the thoughtful collaboration will lead to the best outcome of all parties. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Commissioner.
Name and address, please.
My name is Steve Gasparovic, I live at 548 Ferdinand Drive. I am a resident of Bully Rock, I'm also on the Board of Directors. I just want to echo what Kathy said, we kind of put a compilation of residents' concerns that we've heard over time, once the developer came to us, let us know what their intentions were. Some of the other concerns are, these residents along Peace Chance purchase these properties on a master plan, thinking that they're gonna have the privacy that the backyards afforded them. That being said, we also understand the declarant and the developer's right to annex the property into Bully Rock. So, we're asking that, if you make a decision on this, that your decision, please, be mindful or thoughtful of the, the privacy issues of those folks along Peace Chance Drive, to kind of preserve what they expected when they brought into the community. I will say, the developer's been very upfront with us about their intentions, and I, I think they are truly sincere in their intent to work with us to minimize the impact. So, I'd want you to know that that's the feeling that we get from the developer as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Say something, Dan?
Sure.
I'd like to address the two of you who just talked. You guys did a lot of work in getting all this to present to us, but it's also clear that you feel comfortable with the developers in their honesty and their upfrontness, and I appreciate you sharing that with us, it's something good for us to know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Your name and address, please.
I'm David Swan, I live at 606 Peace Chance Drive, and I'm one of the neighbors of this project that are gonna be impacted by this project. When I purchased my property, the green space behind my lawn, all of the trees, were marked as forest conservation on all the paperwork I could get from the city. Everything showed, the part that came with my deed, all showed it as being dedicated to being forest. I assumed there'd be a forest behind my lot. I assumed there'd be a forest behind my lot going to Greenway Farms. This plan is cutting through that forest conservation area. I, I was shocked that that was going to be done, I don't, I wish you would not approve it, I did take, these are pictures of trees, I, I found like there was no work going on into this forest and your guys are planning on tearing it down. I just, you know, I went out there, these trees are between, are, if they're over 30 inches, I know they're, yes, they're, they're very close, they are very close to the property line there, and some of it is close to the sewer easement and things, but the plan is to put a sidewalk in the sewer easement. I'm concerned they're going to do a lot of clear cutting and I just don't want all these large trees removed and, and I would have them protected, okay? And even the fact, yes, I, I agree with you guys, with the developer, it'd be nice now that we're having a road right next to a public community like this, we should have a security fence, but even the security fence, I, I would like it to be jogged and try to miss the six inch trees or larger when you, when you do it. I'm afraid the developer will want to clear a big path, the whole 20-foot easement, put a sidewalk in, and then, and then the road, and then the swale. The swale's going to eat into the woods quite a bit. I, I agree, there is already a 20, 30-foot cut for the sewer through there, but this road is going to make it a lot bigger, it's going to remove a lot more of the woods. I'm going to see the lights on that street during, when the leaves are off, during the summer, I'm going to hear the cars. I'm real concerned with, with the cars coming up on this new road, it's a steep, it is a grade, we're going to hear the trucks, the dump trucks, we're going to hear all the buses going up and down that road. It wasn't what I planned on when I bought my house, I paid like a 15 grand markup just on the lot, just to get woods like this behind my house, and now this organization is removing this woods on me. And that's my major concern, I'm going to skip my other issues that I brought up. I submitted comments to your department, to the planning department with a lot of other issues, but I'll skip those and just leave it with this forest issue. I'm real concerned with destroying this forest at this point after all these years. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am, in the far, in the back.
Good evening, I'm Carol Zimmerman, I live at 211B Seneca Way here in Havertie Grace, and I'm a member of the Havertie Grace Green Team. So, my comments are primarily, primarily having to do with the environmental effects of the proposed subdivision plan. And I'd like to comment on the proposed private access road, the forest conservation plan, and the landscaping plan associated with the subdivision. We've heard about the connector road A, this will be built the entire length of an existing forest conservation area in Bully Rock. And the road construction will, as some of the people have pointed out, will be extensive and will do considerable long-term, if not permanent, damage to a complex forest ecosystem. And we don't know how many specimen trees there are in there that will be removed, not to mention other essential plants and animals in this conservation area. And the, the plan, as I've seen it, is to install over 100 trees along the road after the construction happens, but that cannot just restore all that will be destroyed in the process of building that road. I would point out that approval of the revisions to enable this road to go through the forest seemed to be at odds with the city's avowed interest in forest conservation as stated in Section 9 of the Comprehensive Plan, which the planning department wrote and the planning commission reviewed and which the city council adopted just last week on May 5th. So, the Comprehensive Plan states, maintaining large tracts of, of undisturbed woodland and other vegetation within developments are a priority. It goes on to say, the city's forest conservation and landscape ordinances must be strictly enforced to preserve the tree canopy to meet state standards. So, I would say if these are the objectives of the city, as seems to be the case with the Comprehensive Plan, that maintaining undisturbed tracts of woodland within development areas, if it's to have any meaning, that this existing forest should be kept as is. That relates to the, the road. The forest conservation plan, I commend the developer for retaining most of the 60 specimen trees that are on the Lamson property. One concern that I would state is that some of the retained trees, if you look at the map, may have critical root zones that are very close to graded areas, which could endanger their longevity. I think 30% is the usual standard for critical root zone around the, the trees, and so I'm not sure what percentage has been applied to, to this plan, so I would just note that. At the same time, I recognize that over half of the approximately 13 acres of the forested area is to be removed, and so I'm just curious what additional steps may have taken place in discussing ways to preserve more of the forest, such as alternatives to the size and configuration of the lots or even their number. And so, going to the landscaping plan, I think it's desirable, they would all agree that using, to use native plants as much as possible, and I think it's commendable that the developers plan to use, for most of the street trees, plant, plan to use native species. The exception is one they call the bloodgood London plane tree, and so I wonder why they could not use the, its, its native relative, which is the Native American sycamore, so I would point that out. And then finally, I'd also note that their plan calls for using the non-native Cusa dogwoods in a reforested areas, which would seem to be inappropriate since that is not a native, and so here I'm wondering why the native flowering dogwood could not be proposed instead. So, those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come forth, please.
Sorry about that. So, my name is Charles Moyer, I live at 626 Peace Chance Drive. Obviously, I'm in one of the properties affected, similar to what Dave had mentioned. This sign is behind my property and all along the properties that are on that street, and it specifically says on here, site disturbance is prohibited. I just wanted to make sure that this is a true statement. It sounds like in some of these discussions, this is not a true statement, which is a shame because it does say trees for our future. So certainly from a personal standpoint, I'm not comfortable with this because that's not what I bought into, that's not what I expected on the long-term for my property. Also, I think this is a good idea for the community, and I'd certainly like to see it kept that way, not only in that one area, but throughout the community, right? Also, a general observation, it seems like a lot of the things we've talked about here, it seems like from a planning commission standpoint, you guys are to the point of deciding whether this should be approved to go ahead, and it seems like there's a lot of things that are not set or determined yet, right? I heard the water was not sufficient, and things have to be set up to be taken care of that. I heard the school was overcrowded, seems like that needs to be taken care of. We got the forest retention areas, the plan is not clear, seems like that needs to be taken care of. So, to me, there's a lot of unanswered questions or unclarified aspects that I don't know how you guys could even approve it at this point, or even consider it to be approved, because there's a lot of things that seem to me unanswered or unclear. But that's my two cents, so thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. Yes, anyone else? Yes, in the back, please.
Can you forgive me? I get nervous speaking in front of people.
Your name and address, please.
My name's Tabitha Hayes, I live at 159, sorry, Pavatan Street in Greenway Farm. And Mr. Place, thank you for your questions. We did receive notice through our HOA. I, I do sit on the board. Sorry. Our property manager, she did send out an email letting us know of the meeting. I do have questions from our community, my community members on things, a lot, some of them are directed to you guys right here. When the building does get started, are you planning to use the Rose, Mohegan from the, at the bend of Mohegan to get back there to do the building, to get the materials there?
Ma'am, we'll, we'll let them address your questions after you've spoken, maybe?
Another one was the homeowners didn't know about the road coming through the back of the homes on Mohegan, I know a lot of people are worried about that. One of the main questions from someone was how far, how far away from the back of their property line will that road be? And another one is, a lot of the community members feel that the road happened because of the failed intersection and that the builder doesn't want to install a light at the intersection of Martha Lewis and 40. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you for bringing those forth. Would the developer like to address those, or?
Okay, so, her question number one was, will construction equipment come off 40 and go through Mohegan? And that would be access, so we haven't considered that or thought, or thought, you know, thought about that yet, so I don't have anything to say, but I can't answer that tonight. Then, her other question was, the new access road A, how close would it be to the back of the homes along Mohegan? So you have a HOA spike strip, that's maybe 20 feet there, then you have a 20-foot sewer main, so that'd be 40. Then, we have a 40-foot right-of-way for the access road. So probably from the back of their lot, not their house, you're probably 45 to 50 feet. Whereas the folks on Peace Chance Drive are anywhere from 150 to 200 feet is their space.
Okay. Okay, well, okay.
And then her third question, the traffic light, yes. So, we did reach out years ago, '22, '23, so at that time, the planning director advised us that we would pay a contribution towards that based on how many units would, we would have, so we wouldn't be paying for the whole light.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, someone else would like to speak? Lady behind you actually was up first, sorry.
Good evening, I'm Lyndon Nitsche, 632 Peace Chance Drive, and my question is for the developers as well. I'm wondering if you could just give more details on the security fence that you plan to put around the bottom end of Peace Chance and Route 40.
Okay, have you determined that yet even?
No.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
So my name is Eric Shimenek, we are on the opposite side of all of you, we're at 236 Mohegan, moved there this year. We bought because of the serenity, the quiet of the woods behind us. We too noticed the preservation signs, not so sure what that really means anymore, since we can just slash a lot of forestry. It's very disappointing, and it's very short on details. It's a little sketch of an explanation why that new road is there, but what is that road? What's on either side of it as far as shrubbery, forestry? They've certainly got to clear a lot to put that road in. Secondly, what about external lights and light pollution? I don't think they want to look off their decks and have lights shining on them any more than we would. So they really are short of a lot of answers, in addition to a lot of the bigger issues, water, et cetera. So, as far as we know, there's not enough information about any of this to make any conscious, logical, rational decision about it. But we're very disappointed too, because people on both sides of this forest purchased homes there for a very specific reason, and that was the peace and quiet and the privacy. And that's now evidently to just be violated. And as I said, we all thought it was preserved. It, it doesn't appear that it was, that's all, thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you for coming in. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Donna Lummis, I work, live at 608 Peace Chance Drive. Like other people that have spoken, I want to impress upon this planning commission that when we bought our house, which has been less than a year, we specifically bought it because it was wooded in the back. The house, although we did not build it, is designed for that purpose, and it was designed for that purpose under the understanding that there is a master plan and that this was a forest conservation area. The entire house is situated towards the back. The main level and the basement have plate glass windows that look out to the back. The deck is huge. We bought it without thinking how great that was. It's going to be useless if what we're looking out on is a lit street, and there's nothing we can do about it now. So, it feels like very much a breach of trust, and it's an incredibly poor situation to put people in who paid extra. When the, when I hear that this property was originally supposed to be part of Bully Rock, what I want to know is then why did you charge a premium to have, to the people who expected to have those woods stay there? And I don't understand why a road has to go there when it was not originally intended to go there. So I would impress upon the commission to please reconsider approving this road. It is not fair to the people who live on Peace Chance, or anyone who backs up to those woods who paid extra so that they could have those woods there and designed their homes specifically based on that agreement. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Carol?
I apologize for my zitzeness earlier. My name's Jean Johnson, I live on 666 Chesapeake Drive in Havertie Grace, and I'm also the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. In July of 2020, we went out to see the property, the historic house at the Lamson site. Eric was with us and a couple other folks, and we loved seeing that property for lots of reasons. But I'm really here tonight to ask that as a part of this process, I want to put this on the public record, that we would really sincerely love to see the responsible parties for this development to contract for a formal documentation of the, by a certified architectural historian of the property. One of our former members, Roger Lee, did some wonderful deed work and established initially and established initially some information about the relationship between the Lamson property and possibly Mark Pringle's Bloomsbury, which was one of the Haverty Grace villas, which are described beautifully in Christopher Wigg's book about Hartford County architecture. This whole area is very important in the history of early America in Haverty Grace. A 1950 deed describes a stone marked with MP, which indeed stands for Mark Pringle. So, there's all kinds of other evidence that Roger was able to find in his very preliminary look at what some of the historical significance of the Lamson property might be. Um, and again, we would really encourage that that happened before this property, like many properties in our community, have gone the way of time and history. Um, and again, I would like to say, hooray for everybody who showed up tonight for a public meeting. It's a sign of a good, healthy community going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Uh, any comments from commissioners? Yes, sir. Harry?
So, what she just asked for, we don't have purview to impose that as a condition. Am I correct?
Looking at it today, I would have to look at the city code to determine that. So, I'm really here tonight for process. But in terms of the actual purview of this commission, I would have to look separately. I think it has to be identified as a property and then there's a process. But I'm not sure, sitting here today, if... yeah.
I appreciate... The reason why I'm asking is because there might be some sort of inclination to make a condition that is not in our purview, which I'm not sure if it is.
But just to clarify, I think they did say they were preserving the structure. So, I don't know how much further other than preserving it. So, that... that would have to be looked into by the department.
Sure. And they were asking for documentation and such like that, which, again, I... that's under the administration's approval.
Correct. Warren?
Well, it's also not without precedent. Uh, some years ago, when scenic overlook went through, uh, those of us with long gray beards on the Planning Commission may remember that the Planning Department interceded between the residents and the builder to keep the tree buffer behind the homes on scenic overlook to everyone's consummate satisfaction. I mean, it was really a well-done... well-done job. Not mandatory. There were no... There was nothing that was legislatively compelling. It was just done out of goodwill.
Okay. I mean, I would say that the developer and the, um, people involved in that are here. They heard those comments. I, again, heard like comments made earlier that they intend to, you know, do something... They're not going to bulldoze down that house. So, um, where it goes from there is... we can work it out, I think.
I have a question. Um, to the developers, or, um... There's been a lot of statements from all the residents. And I have... they've all addressed the same one about the lighting on this possible road. So, I would like you to address the lighting situation.
So, within Bully Rock community, there's a lighting spec. Okay, so, um, the only streetlights are on the collector roads, which would be Blenheim and the Parkway. Then, each house has a dusted-on light. So, and the city only requires at intersections... But again, it's within Bully Rock. So, we would have to ask relief not to put a streetlight within Lamson. But on that access road A, there's no requirement for us to put a light.
Any lights?
Any lights, no.
Does that answer some of the questions for some of you? I don't know if that's... yeah.
Just to confide on David Spannigan, comments there. Right there, the drawing did show two lights by the pond right now and another light by the emergency exit on their drawing. And I just don't want those approved at this point if we can get rid of them. I'm just trying to get rid of any of the light fixtures that we don't require for some real need.
Thank you.
Right. So, we would have to follow the Bully Rock regs for that. So, they got on there. That was some mistake.
Thank you.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Janice?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Warren had... Warren wanted to come in.
Warren, I'm sorry.
I... I live in a... in a... What do you call it? A monumented community within Bully Rock. And any lighting within that community, we pay for. We have an individual HOA that's not part of the... what we call the big HOA. And we actually, on the small... on our small streets, we mandate that... we mandate control and pay for that lighting.
Your HOA does?
Our HOA does. Yes, correct.
I don't know if that's going to be the same case with the HOA for Lamson or not, but that is a detail that I... I think will be worked out at some point in the future between the department and the developer. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chip?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well, at minimum, I don't think we can... We certainly can't approve this application tonight. There's too many outstanding questions, basic questions about notice. We've had no detail as required for a conservation plan, especially over the road. And that needs to be provided with any application. You know, defining what the real impacts are, including the six-inch trees. You know, I had separate comments too on the... just the basic layout. And some of these had been mentioned before. And I provided those in my written comments. I want... wouldn't go over them. But there's still... the plan could be tightened even further. Um, the applicant did well to go to the Board of Appeals and get a smaller lot size. But as been suggested in some of the comments, that the plan could be tightened further to keep it further away from the old growth forest, to perhaps avoid some of those particular trees, like number 53 and 54. And there's a couple of trees east of that that I don't think you all captured as specimen trees that I think are... and they really help to define the landscape. The MOUs, we need to see further definition of the, um, adequate public facilities. And, you know, the choice of putting this road through the woods rather than out to Route 40 is a choice of the developer. And by the way, let me say, I have the hugest respect for, um, Robert and Bob. As has been mentioned, these guys are total gentlemen, total professionals, I think. I certainly disagree, as do some members of the community and their consultants. They do a very professional job. But there's still work to be done on this. And, um, the road is a choice. And, you know, it... Going out to Route 40 remains a choice. Making those improvements to the traffic light, making those improvements to the intersection, I think, uh, could benefit all of Greenway Farms in addition to make this, uh, plan work better. So, we don't necessarily have to take this road out to Sunday Silence as a given. And given that this for... this is a forest area, this is a forest conservation area, I... we can... I don't see how we can approve a road through a forest conservation area. That is certainly within our purview. And, uh, and I think that's just a fundamental limitation on this application and on this site. It's forest conservation easement. It's forest retention area. I know of no procedure that allows you to undo a forest retention area. Uh, I think we're going to need, if the... if staff thinks that's a possibility, we need further clarification on that. But as it stands right now, not only is it within our purview, it's in our responsibility to deny a road through a forest conservation easement area. And, um... And then, just on the HOA questions too. Given the potential disproportionate impacts of Lamson on the HOA, someone had suggested to me, I think it's a good idea, that maybe a sub-HOA be formed, like we have for the condos at Bully Rock, to handle the infrastructure needs, um, within Lamson. That avoids, you know, trying to figure out, oh, well, how much extra do we have to pay for landscaping for this, that, or the other thing? So, I think that that could be a mechanism to take some of the burden off the HOA and could be a condition of any approval.
So, I have a question. For, um, a lot of these issues to be worked out so that the department and the developer can, um, negotiate them, do... do we not have to have some kind of approval for them to move forward with those things? Or how does that work?
So, first, before you make a motion, you'll need to close the record. And then, you would need to make findings by a motion of what you found. And if you need further information, then you can table the consideration to request certain additional information. Um, and then you would take it up again at the next meeting. But, um, that's based on the process of what I heard tonight. That's kind of seems to be where it's at. Um, or you can vote to approve if you feel like there's enough in the staff report based on testimony. If you would like to see additional information, the Planning Commission does have the right to see that. The MOUs that were mentioned, they're going to be on the agenda for Monday night's meeting, I believe, for the City Council. So, they'll be publicly available. Yeah, I mean, so that's kind of the process. You would... if there's no more testimony on the subject, you close the test... you close the record for tonight. If you feel, as a group, you need additional information, specify what that is by a motion. And then, you can table it until that motion's available, until that information's available. Or you can approve it tonight. You can reject it tonight. Or you can prove with conditions. The conditions have to be within the purview of the review, which is, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? Have the elements of the city code been met in the sense of, did they submit a landscape plan? Did they submit a forest conservation plan? Those types of things. So, that's really... those are the three... three things you can do.
Okay.
Okay. Is that helpful?
We'll see. Yes?
Uh, with all due respect to my colleague, Chip, the choice to go to 40 is not... not a choice. We had to get a U.S. Senator to get CSX to even meet with the city and have a conversation about accessing US 40 and crossing the railroad tracks, which they refused based on the collision with a trailer hauling golf carts during the LPGA several years ago. But they would not even meet with us in conversation. And they... it's their feeling that they simply don't have to. And I don't think... I mean, you can drive them back to converse again with CSX, but I don't think choice is a good... It's not a good choice of words in my...
Well, Warren, I think you're thinking maybe of Blenheim Lane. And this road would go out to Martha Lewis Lane through Greenway Farms and across the big brand... Well, relatively new bridge that crosses the railroad tracks. And, uh, you know, that's been a problematic intersection for a long time. I know that the people in, um, Greenway Farms have complained about it. And it's an intersection that needs improvement. So, this Lamson could go out that way. And they could contribute to those improvements. And it would make it a better intersection for everybody. But it doesn't involve the railroad at all.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just have a quick question for the developers. Um, have you heard the comments? Have you noted them down? And do you have a plan to address them?
Yes, the big... the big is minimum impact for Road A. So, we will do our very best to have a minimum impact. So, the downside of this is stormwater. So, if we could get relief on stormwater, that would significantly reduce any impact to the forest. Okay? So, it's... it's... stormwater and forest conservation kind of collide. Okay, and it's always been in the past, stormwater comes first. So, we will ask for some relief, um, because it is an open-section road. So, there's no curb and gutters. And so, it's going to sheet flow. So, we will do our very best to minimize impact to the forest.
And, sorry, that negotiation happens between you guys, right? The Director of Planning and yourself?
That would be Public Works. Drives does the stormwater. So, it would be the Public Works.
No, I meant the feedback you've heard tonight.
Oh, yeah, we... right, we work with Planning and Public Works.
Okay.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Oh, one... one last one on the issue of the forest conservation area.
Yes, sir.
As I understand the Act, the designation of a forest conservation officer within the city of Haverty Grace bestows on that individual a lot of power to decide what is... what is not the forest conservation area. And there's not... discretion is not a... There's a lot of discretion involved. So, I don't know, Eric. I assume... I assume we've now named a new forest conservation officer?
Well, per the Forest Conservation Act, as well as our local ordinance, the Department of Planning is the one that approves the forest conservation plan. And just to your comment about discretion, um, I would say that it's very prescriptive, um, the code. There's a lot of detail in there. There's a lot of requirements. So, um, I personally wouldn't say it's a lot of discretion on staff's part. It's very detailed about what you have to do. It's very prescriptive. There's definitions. Um, it's very tight. So, there's a lot of protection built in. And, um, I mean, I know it's pretty dry to read. But if you ever had a chance to read it, you'll see that there's a lot in there, a lot of regulations. And it doesn't afford us a whole lot of discretion when we're reviewing plans.
But is there a conservation officer? Do we have one?
It's the Department.
The Department of Planning.
Whole department?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the Director.
The Director, basically.
Yes, sir. Harry?
All right. So, look, I've been weighing all this. And I just want to sum up where I'm at right now, okay? And it goes like this. Um, the Planning Department has spent a significant amount of time reviewing the appropriateness of the application. This is a preliminary site plan, okay, for subdivision, which, once approved, kicks off a whole bunch of other things. Real life landscaping plans, real life reforestation plans, whatever. I believe that the Department of Planning will make sure that the rules of reforestation are followed per the city code, whether it's stormwater relief, which I don't... I don't know. That's in the city's purview too. But, um, that they'll follow it. Whether it's a red line to the Bully Rock master plan or whatnot, I don't know. But, um, the way it was presented, and I understand the concerns of a lot of people, but I'm... my understanding is, is that these gentlemen are following the code. Okay? And it's not my business right here to argue with the Department of Planning over the appropriateness of the notification system. They said they did it right. I believe it, okay? I'm not here to argue that. So, I think what you ought to do, just my suggestion, is call for a motion and we vote and we see where it falls. And that would be my recommendation to you, sir.
Okay. If we're finished with comments, then...
Well, I... let me just... let me make a different... Take a different tact on this. The reason I wrote six pages of comments here was to establish a record. And we've had a further record established by... had a further record established by the public here. I think we are not in a position, we're certainly not in a position to approve this tonight. I think we found shortfalls in notice, we've found shortfalls in adequate public facilities, we've found shortfalls in failure to define the impacts under the forest conservation law as required with the preliminary subdivision application. We've found a lack of information on the six inches of trees. We have alternate forms of access that could be considered. And we should not be approving a road through a forest conservation area that's already been established. This is not a renegotiation, or should it be a renegotiation? This has been established, the comprehensive plan has established that, the existing record of Bully Rock has established that, people have relied on that. So I don't, we certainly can't approve that, and I think we have enough information to deny the application and have the applicant come back with a revised plan or alternative plans. Or we could table this and ask for more information, including alternatives, alternate, alternative forms of access into the subdivision. But I would, I would say we have a choice. Our choice is to deny this application or maybe table this for further information.
Harry, just a second. April?
Yeah, might I make a suggestion for clarification? Because this body also needs to make findings of fact before it votes to approve, it might be better to go through the staff report, and for each item, for example, adequate public facilities for schools. You take a vote on whether you feel like the, based on the staff report and the presentation tonight, whether the adequate public facilities for schools was, was found as a finding. If you did, you can vote to approve that. I think if you went through each finding, that will make it easier for the applicant and the department to figure out what additional information might be needed, as opposed to a blanket vote, because you'd need to make the findings anyway. So if you can make the findings now of the specific items, and then the ones that might need additional information, then if they do have to come back, then they know what they're coming back on, and it can streamline the process a little bit.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Two questions. And the first one is APFO. No permits will be issued until APFO is satisfied, correct?
That's correct. Building permits can't be issued.
Okay, so there it is. That's the first thing. Second, I heard what the city attorney said. Been doing this for a while, never did it like that before. I don't know if that's the new rules. But generally, that, just like we made those guys say it's true and correct to the best of their ability, I've always believed that what the planning department has given me is true and correct to the best, and I'm not here, I'm here to evaluate, make conditions, not question them on it. I mean, everybody knows I don't like the school thing, but it meets, that's what the rules say.
Right, but for clarification, you can ask questions about what your concerns might be for school, but then, then the staff report says one thing, and then you would make a finding, do you agree with the staff report? Do you say, I agree with the staff report, plus with the other information? Do you see what I'm saying? And there's case law that says you need to make findings of fact, and so that's what we're trying to educate this body on, making the findings of fact.
And I think that Mr. Place wrote a very thoughtful dissertation of his opinions, and I think those things have been answered. My opinion, you guys might think different, it's okay. But, you know, he brought up concerns, they were answered. I just want to, I, I don't get it.
Well, so if we took the council's advice here, we could go through each one of these things in the staff report and address them one at a time until we get through them and see, I think that, would that help everyone come to clarification on where they feel? Or...
I don't think that's going to make a difference. I think you can go through that, and there's going to be differing opinions up here regardless of that. It's clear.
Okay.
And, again, that's okay, that's why this is a diverse body of...
Right.
Okay? So it's, I'll do whatever you want.
So if, in light of what you're saying, would you care to make a motion?
You know, I don't make many motions, but I'm willing to make a motion today. And that, my motion is, is that this commission, we recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay.
As per the staff report, and the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Okay.
Okay? That's my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
So, Harry, would you object if we made a bit of a change to that?
You can second it, and then we can have a discussion where you change it.
Okay, so I can't...
You can second it, but...
Then we'll have discussions.
Then we'll have a discussion and...
To change it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let me go through a roll call vote here.
Well, did you want to suggest, you want to suggest some...
We can discussion.
Yes, discussion and maybe any potential amendments.
So in my, can I just start now? So in my opinion, it's not that either way, approve or deny, black or white, you know? So I think, I, that's why I asked these guys, if you are noting what is being said, so if the process kicks off, you have the time to come back and address what's being asked There's quite a bit of public concern here, and it needs to be addressed.
And it's been duly noted, I believe. They have heard all the testimony and would take that, all that into consideration, I'm sure.
That's my point.
Faradi, suggesting that we table this for further consideration?
Where's the motion to approve that?
Well, is there any other discussion, though? Is, do...
I don't offer any other discussion, I said what I needed to say.
Yeah, sorry. I certainly couldn't vote to approve this tonight. As I said, I could vote to deny the application tonight, or I could vote to table this until we have a more complete application. And a study of alternatives that would be more responsive to certainly comments that some of us has raised, and comments that the public has raised. And I think I've already articulated this.
And I agree with that. So if there's no more discussion, you could take a vote, and you can, we can vote it down or up, and then, and then we could go on to another motion where somebody else motions something else.
Well, and I, myself, you know, feel like I have faith in our departments, that they will see to it that the code and the law is implemented into this plan.
Didn't we just go through the issue of tabling two, one or two meetings ago? If we table, it's for a year.
No, no, it's up to 60 days, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not an extension, it's just tabling the discussion.
Thank you, Chip.
Is that, okay?
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
I have an issue, because we've, we've come from this, we have a community, that's an old community. There was a way of doing things for many, many years, things have done by the back slap, you know, the shaking of the hand, the nothing written. I don't like this, because we've already had two issues since I've been here, where we had to backtrack on something because it was done improperly at first. And I don't like that. I don't like that at all. So I'm going to say we just table it.
I agree with Janice. We've had too many issues.
We really can't have input from the gallery here.
I just, that's how I feel. I feel like we should do it the right way.
Yes, yeah. Well, and I feel that, that the department has, they are the ones that have taken the responsibility here of studying what they studied, found their findings, and have, you know, published this report, this staff report. So I am in support of the department and the work that they've done to see to it that, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing here. So we take a vote?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second? Or any amendments? Let me start with Harry.
Yes.
Janice?
No.
Chip?
No.
Farhat?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to, yeah. Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go on to the next item.
Next item. Been exhausted.
...with Morris and Ritchie Associates. This is the plan that we're talking about. We have submitted a landscape plan to further along that conversation. And mostly what we've done is we've tried to block and screen the areas where the parking lots are from the proposed houses, as long, as well as some screening off of the houses that exist on Peace Chance Drive. As you've heard, where the purpose of this is to change it from a 41-lot subdivision to a 40-lot subdivision. We lost a lot for the connection to Lamson, which we just talked about. And we've moved the emergency access drive away from this end of what was the cul-de-sac to make it more usable, less steep. And we've also added a mailbox pavilion with a couple of parking spaces and some screening, because right now, the way it was before, people would drive down in, at night, with their lights on, which would shine right into the Greenway Farm townhouses, which exist right across from where the cul-de-sac is. So, the emergency access has been moved so that it's across from some open space in Greenway Farms, instead of directly across from some existing townhouses.
Was that the reason for moving the emergency access?
It was partially, yes.
Yeah. What else was the reason?
Well, it's a combination that it's to make it less steep, and also, we made it wider where it is here, in case it actually have to be used as an emergency access for the communities. That we're proposing it as a 24-foot-wide pavement section, whereas now, I think it's 10 or 12. And as we spoke before, we're proposing a trail/side walk coming from the Lamson property, and then a sidewalk on the one side of the road, so that unlike a lot of the other communities in Bully Rock, there will actually be a sidewalk out to the trail system, which currently exists along Bully Rock Parkway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, quick question. I think I asked this once before, it seems like it.
You might pull the, Harry might pull the mic.
Sorry, I thought it was close enough. Hey, tell me about the gate.
The gate?
The gate. Chain, horn, knock box, what you got on the gate?
So, Scott, the emergency service chief, he's always been complaining about the gate and the steepness of that Sunday Silence emergency access.
I remember, it was steep.
So, we, I'm not sure, about a year ago, met with him with the safety committee from Bully Rock members, and he was fine with a six-foot, black aluminum picket fence gate that would open out and have your tie-downs either way, and the city would put their lock on it.
Oh.
So...
So, a chain and a lock?
No, it's gonna be a...
Somebody has to, emergency responder has to get out and have a key or punch a code?
Right, right, so it's gonna be a...
Not a horn, not a knock box there, nothing?
Well, I gotta get with him for the final design, but Willow Way, off Whimsical, on the other side of the community, would be the first gate. So, that gate would be duplicated over at Greenway Farms.
Okay.
And we're also gonna have that security fence, so we have to tie it all, tie it all together.
You know what happens, right? If it's really an emergency, they're not stopping.
It's...
I mean, it's just a simple fact, right? Emergency, you can replace a gate later.
Right, right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's secured, that this isn't some sort of cut-through.
No, no, it's, well, one of the new neighbors who bought on Peace Chance was at the Board of Appeals hearing, she said, "You think you could put another gate there? That'd be a great way to get out to 40." And they're not interested in another entrance gate. So, it will be a gate only for emergency use.
Understood. Thank you.
Anybody else, questions? Any other thoughts, gentlemen? Okay, so, any discussion amongst us? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Hello again, it's Carol Zimmerman, 211B, Sidikeway, Haverty Grace. And I wanted to speak on this proposed revision for modifying Sunday Silence Court. And because, once again, I would note that it's intended to be built, this change to Sunday Silence Court is to enable a road to be built through an existing forest conservation area. That's the key thing here, why this amendment is being proposed. And I would point out again, that supposedly, the city, all of you here, have voted on or approved of a comprehensive plan, which is supposed to make maintaining large tracts of undisturbed woodland or other vegetation within developments a priority. So, I would just point out, if you believe that it is a priority, that you really need to think seriously about the wisdom of putting a very long road through an existing forest conservation area, when there is an alternative, maybe more than one alternative, but the one that's also specified in the comprehensive plan is access from Greenway Farms. And the Greenway Farms access would be much less destructive to forest conservation areas than the one through Sunday Silence Court. And I would also note that access through Greenway Farms would have the added benefit of reduced vehicular traffic by future Lamson residents, because to reach businesses and other destinations in Haverty Grace, rather than going through the circuitous route of through Bully Rock to get to Chapel Road, they would have a more direct line. And of course, reduced vehicular travel has environmental benefits to the city as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to comment, but I would ask that you give serious consideration to this existing forest conservation land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please. Name an address, please.
My name is Tabitha Hayes, I live at 159, sorry, Palatine Street in Greenway Farms. My first question is for you. I have a neighbor of mine who cannot be here, because she is at home with her four kids that are, need to go to bed. If I were to call her and put her on speaker, would you allow her to speak if she gave her name and address?
Yeah, I suppose so, yes.
Okay. Let me get her really... And I believe she may be saying what I have written down. What I've written down is pretty much everything we came up with together before the meeting started today.
Okay.
You ready?
My wife wants to know if I have it right.
Okay.
You're on.
Is it my chance to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Courtney Bridges, I live at 1666 Main Course Street in Greenway Farms. And I am giving public concern right now. I'm a prior board member, and in 2018, our board was able to assume the position that it's in, and started to be able to look over documents. I am not okay with this proposed change. It goes against several PWAs that we currently have in our possession, along with amendments to these PWAs. The other piece of this is that in order for Greenway Farms to even have use in occupancy, a fully paved road was supposed to be completed, and was never completed. We have been fighting for a year for a knock box on this gate, which I understand that was one of the questions previously, and Ms. Ishack, along with several others, have continued to, I don't know if it's dragging the feet, we just don't know where a knock box is, that we can't figure it out. We currently only have one way in and one way out. This is our emergency access. The other piece is, if you move this emergency access, you are on HOA property. To my understanding, our development, our HOA, has never been notified by any other legal advisors for Bob Ward, that this was even a possible change, which means, and according to one of the Public Works agreements that we have, this is supposed to be discussed between both parties, both developers. However, because now we are in established HOA, that would be between Greenway Farm Phase One, which would be asking property management and their legal advisors, and Bob Ward's legal advisors, before that emergency access point is even thought about being moved backwards. And the other thing that I have a question about is, or the other thing I want to state is, the construction vehicles. We currently have a failed intersection. We have been provided with S.H.A., the most recent, Mr. Goins received a document from S.H.A. basically saying our intersection has failed, and it is failed, even with the new 289 homes, or whatever they are coming in. So, at this point, I am requesting that no construction vehicles or anything have access, even through this new emergency access, if it is done correctly, be given to come through here, unless there is a mitigation of a light signal at this intersection. Martha Lewis is reporting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add on to what Courtney said. Right now, if the construction vehicles were to turn off of 40 into going 40 East, turning into Greenway Farms, yes, they have put up, I guess, little dividers to divide the intersection for people, making the turn to go out into, to downtown, go, sorry, going into Haverty Grace, or turning into our subdivision. I have seen, and I have sent out several emails to the council members on the fact that we have people that are doubling up in our sub, in that median, and if a semi is turning into the median, which I have seen, to where they, if they try to use the intersection correctly, they are using, they are blocking part of 40 going east, just to make that turn legally. If they're not doing that, they're blocking us from being able to leave our subdivision to go into Haverty Grace.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Questions from the commission on that? Would the developer like to comment on that, or?
There are, when the developer, Greenway Farms, went into default, there was four open space parcels that didn't get, that were finished, but never got deeded over to the HOA. So, the parcel that this new proposed access location is, is not, was never turned over to the HOA. So, if the city attorney could elaborate on it...
Mr. Holwick is correct. The information we have so far is there are, there's a chain of title issue with that particular parcel. So, I am actually in the process of researching that right now. And then there's also a question, because the city wants, the city itself prefers a, an improved emergency access road between the two communities, and the current grade of the existing emergency access road is not as favorable as this new location. So, the city's preference, as well as the fire chief's preference, is the new location, and the city is investigating on when and how to acquire the property. Of course, because it deals with public, a public emergency access, there are eminent, there are condemnation rights that we could exert. We just haven't gotten that far yet. So, that's the process. We're still investigating the title, the title work on that property.
And it sounds like it's a Greenway Farms issue, more...
It was, one of the prior developers of Greenway Farms is the last owner that I've seen on the public records.
So, this emergency access goes through Greenway Farms' property, is that correct?
No, it's not the HOA's property, it's someone in Towson has it.
The last title owner I've seen is Novo Realty, so we're still going through that process.
So, it's just hanging out, but the, so it just, when they went to funk, so actually, two of those four parcels are between townhouse buildings, okay? So, the intent was to turn them over, but it never happened.
Well, Bobby, could, Robert, could you just point to the emergency access itself, and tell me who owns that land?
This, this area here.
Yeah.
So, we don't have, if you saw, there's a townhouse building here.
Yeah.
Existing access is here, which is steep.
Right.
So, this parcel land here is owned by the realty company, or was owned, it's not owned by the HOA.
Okay.
Okay, so, what, what city attorney's describing is if they can't find the owner or get a response, since it's for the benefit of the public, if I'm telling this right April, the city could do eminent domain.
If necessary, because one of the entities we found is no longer in existence. And then we did find their attorney, and then we found the subsequent owner through declaration, not a standard deed. And then I'm, my understanding is those old declarations may not have carried over, so that's why it's a little bit muddy right now.
So, you're making an application over land that you don't own? Is that correct?
There's an MOU, there's a memorandum of understanding that the city submitted, or that they were submitting as part of the package.
And a MOU regarding what?
The emergency access.
Over land that they don't own?
Correct, but the city has the rights to eminent domain property that's needed for a public purpose, and in this case, we would be getting an emergency access road that not only is preferable for the city and the fire chief, but...
Now, I understand why to do it, but it seems a little out of order to make an application before the land is secured.
That's a matter to be discussed with the department and the city council.
Right, in other words, nothing's gonna be built until that gets taken care of. So, that land, however it gets acquired, would be well before site work would ever start.
And that was the previous, that would be the same with the previous site, or this previous...
Correct, yeah, because this, this, this site work has to be done first, to get to Lamson. So, this is, first up, Lamson would be, or simultaneously, they would be built. But Lamson can't be built without this. So, the two, the two issues were that the current slope of the emergency access is unacceptable for big trucks. And secondly, is by moving that access, we could do a buffer landscape, and we might have put a privacy fence up there to keep the headlights from Sunday Silence shining in that townhouse second story. Okay, so, that was the two folds.
But it was gonna be the same issue, whether it was the previous plan or this change, going across property that was owned by someone else?
But, well, I don't think that came up last time. I thought the, the steep one, that, I didn't hear that last time.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either.
So, has it always been that way? The first proposed one was...
The one that's built there now was, was done 20 years ago?
Who owns that?
Well, Greenway Farms, there's an easement there now.
Yeah.
And then the developer, Greenway Farms, contributed $15,000 to that gate.
So, there's an easement at the current?
At the current spot.
But not in the proposed?
Not in the proposed, no.
All right, so this is a little out of order.
And, and again, just to be clear, it's for, we're talking fire trucks, and it's too steep for fire trucks.
Right, so...
Right.
So, the title research and all that, so it's benefiting everyone.
And I'm, I'm just trying to establish, the last time, it wasn't a problem. Now, there's just a question because of property ownership, and that'll be worked through between the administration and...
Right, we have a MOU on Monday's council.
Yes, that's the two MOUs, one relating to the emergency access, and the other one related to the funding for the water sewer improvements.
Right, so when we get through all the planning and all that, then when we go to doing the Public Works agreements, we would have to have the ownership or the right to put the access there.
So, I'll ask this question again. No permits will be issued unless this issue's worked out, correct?
Correct. I think the thing to understand is that a lot of things happen after it leaves this body, right? They have to be done.
I understand totally.
So, you can be rest assured that things will not happen unless they're done properly per city code.
I'm saying that for the benefit of the audience.
Right.
That, rest assured, that this is a plan, and that certain things need to happen before permits and authorizations are issued.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct in assuming that you can't do anything up there till this gets put in place?
It's, well, right, you have your, all your grading, all has to get done, so we would, we would build this part, Sunday Silence, and with that, we would do the emergency access. And then, once the emergency access is built, then we could get building permits.
So, let me clarify this again. So, one other thing is, is there's already an easement in place, there's already emergency access there, there's not, this is just preferential to emergency operations in the city, and they're being cooperative. Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Any other comments from anyone?
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Do I need to state my name and address again?
Please.
Tabitha Hayes, 159 Palatine Street in Greenway Farm. The current, sorry. The current easement right here, that's been there, as far as I remember, I moved into the subdivision in 2018. It's not as steep as some people claim it to be. Where they're wanting the proposed new emergencies access to go, that is actually Greenway Farms' property, that was actually annexed in to Greenway, into my HOA. From my understanding, because everything, all of my documents that I read through, even I'd have to ask my property manager, and I have the stuff sent over to our legal team, but this section right here, that was annexed in as part of Phase One.
If I mind, my chairman?
Sure.
On my computer screen, account identifier 0680, I'm sorry, 06083544, on the SDAT website, it lists Greenway Holding Parcel 3 LLC as the owner of that particular parcel, is .36 acres, so...
That was, that is annexed into the subdivision. You would have to speak with, or legal.
But I'm just saying, the public record is showing...
Yes.
...it's owned by another entity, and that would need to be corrected.
In our documents, that is part of Phase One of Greenway Farm.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments or thoughts, I'd invite the commissioners to have an open discussion of this case, please.
Now, can I ask, has the landscape plan been approved for this, or are you still considering this, considering the landscape plan?
At this point, we only have preliminary approval.
Yeah.
For the landscape. And to take it a step further, the, since you last reviewed the First Amendment a year ago, you made several conditions specifying lighting and buffering.
And buffering the lighting, so you've already done that.
Yeah, and since then, they have revised the landscape plan. And then with this additional amendment, they would, again, further make another additional preliminary landscape plan, and they would submit this to us for review prior to final approval.
So, we already made the record requesting screening of lighting?
Yep.
So, that, so we don't have to do anything more on that? That's for you guys to follow up on?
Yeah, and it's already included in the original letter from a year ago.
All right, but not quite in the plan yet, so you can figure that out. Okay.
No other discussion? Could we entertain a, a motion?
Look, this isn't me, I don't normally do this. I usually just let somebody else make it, but, so, I'm going to say that the Planning Commission approves the revision to the preliminary subdivision plan per the memorandum given to us from the Department of Planning.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I think I'll be voting, I like the idea of the emergency access being relocated, but I'll probably vote no, one, because part of this application is to extend the road into Lamson, and so, because I voted no before, I'm gonna vote no again. And also, I like to, I think it'd be better to have the ownership cleared up before we approved on this. I like to clean things up before we approve anything, and not leave it to after the fact.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners?
So, the question would be, let's just say that ownership can't be determined or whatever, we still have an easement for an access road, so we're okay. So, it's just an administrative legal thing right now, not us. That if it, if it goes through legal, then they build it in the new place, and if it doesn't go through legal, we still have one, although it's not as great as what the emergency operations would like.
Well, my understanding would be if, that the only change might be, they might have to move where they put that mailbox thing or something, because that might, is that correct? So, yeah, we would still have the emergency access, it would just be less than desirable. We would have a new gate, that would be it.
Okay. We're gonna call for a vote on this. Farhat?
Yes.
Chip?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. So, that passes. Five to one. That concludes our...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, anyone make a...
I'm motioning that.
Holy, where you been?
I gladly motion to adjourn.
Did you all miss me?
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you're adjourned in the meeting. Go ahead, it's too late now.
How was it sitting down there?
I have one mortal thing I wanna do, but that's okay.
Was it weird sitting down there, though, and listening?